Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari. Hariram, hariram, ram ram, harirari.
Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nittananda Sri Adhitagada Dharshivashadi Bhaur Bhatavinda. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 harirari.
Ram Ram, re re Krishna, 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 re re Ram, re Ram, ram, re. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, 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 re re Ram, re Ram, ram, re re Krishna, 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 re re. Hari Ram, Hari Ram, Ram Ram, re. Namavistavaad Bharams Parivrja Kachari Shudhushata. Ismaingre Savicharana Arvind Bhaktivedanta Swami Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Namaaya Ki Jaye, Ammaaya Ki Jaye, Bhaktivedi Ki Jaye, Thulsi Maharani Ki Jaye, Samveeta Bhaktavindhi Ki Jaye. Kaligapitipavanare Krishna Mahamantra Ki Jaye, Samveeta Bhaktavindhi Ki Jaye. All Glories to Assembly Deputies, Hare Krishna, All Glories to Assembly Deputies, Hare Krishna, All Glories, All Glories. All Glories to Sri Guru and Sri Gauranga, Sri La Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Hare Krishna, so thank you for joining in, today we started on time. Okay, so tomorrow is the most auspicious occasion of Balaram Puranima. Now Balaram Puranima is the appearance of Lord Balaram. It is said Balaram is different from Krishna only in two ways, one is a complexion. Which is, Balaram is whitish in color whereas our Lord Krishna is shama sundar, a little blackish. Rain cloud color is shama sundar. And Balaram is supreme personality of servitor godhead. Whereas Krishna is the supreme personality of godhead. He is enjoyer and the supreme personality of servitor godhead is Balaram. It is said that Balaram expands himself into everything, all of the paraphernalia that are used in the service of the lord. Whether it is the dhamm, whether it is a musical instruments, whether it is the ornaments of the lord, everything is Balaram. And eight, Balaram has chantarasa, he actually expands into all of these things. The musical instruments, the dhamm, the temple, you know the dhamm itself, rindavan dhamm like that. And in dasiras, he serves Krishna, sometimes he massages his feet. And sometimes Krishna massages his Balaram's feet and this way there is a reciprocation of dasiras also. There is reciprocation of sakiras also, they go, while they are going onto the rindavan to herd the cows. That time they play a lot of games and sometimes they play that, however whichever team wins, they have to carry the other on their shoulders. And sometimes Krishna carries Balaram and all of his teammates and sometimes Balaram carries Krishna and all of his teammates. Like that there is a lot of sakiras, there is a lot of playing. And then vatsalyaras, right, Balaram is the elder brother of Krishna, so Yasoda Maya tells Balaram, Balaram. You take care of Krishna nicely, then you are going to hurt the cows. He is a small boy, isn't it? So he also plays the vatsalya role, he actually cares for Krishna. And in this way he serves as in a vatsalya mood also to Krishna. And Balaram actually went and told Yasoda Maya that, you know Krishna is eating mud. And then that time Yasoda Maya was really worried. Because other people she thinks, you know, they just want to tell something about Krishna. But then Balaram told this, then Yasoda Maya actually went and asked Krishna. Right, and then Krishna says, if you are really Maya, if you want to check, you open my, let me open my mouth, you can check my mouth like that. And then we know that Krishna showed the entire universe in his mouth. That was after Balaram actually, in all his concern and love and in vatsalya, we went and told the Yasoda that Krishna has eaten mud. And then of course in Madhuryaras, Balaram expands as Ananda Manjari. And you know assist in the sweet pastimes of Sri Radha and Krishna. So in this way we seen all the five rasaas. Balaram is actually participating in the service of Lord Sri Krishna. Tomorrow is Balaram Puranima and like we said, balarama. Rama means one who gives, one who gets pleasure, one who gives pleasure. Bala means the spiritual strength. So we can pray to Balaram for the spiritual strength to serve. You know, Rama refers to Radha Raman, or it refers to Lord Ram, right? So the bala or the spiritual strength required to serve Sri Radha Raman. Now we can pray to Lord Balaram in this way. Yeah, so tomorrow is Balaram's appearance day, tomorrow is fasting till noon, till twelve P M. After that, it's normal, normal break first. You know, we can offer nice boga to their lordships and then we can honor nice prashadam after twelve o'clock. We can take a central party chant extra rounds to hear. Vashimad Bhagavatam Bhagavat Gita, Chetanichari Damret, more. Engage in chanting more of Hare Krishna Mahamantra. And in this way try to please the Adi Guru, the original guru. Our Shri La Prabhupada, all of our spiritual masters, the entire Guru Parampara, they are all representatives of Balaram. That's why Balaram is called Adi Guru or the original spiritual master. He is the representation of all the spiritual masters, all the spiritual masters are representatives of Balaram like that. So it is only by the mercy of Balaram that we can get the spiritual strength to serve Sri Radha and Krishna, to serve. And our Guru Parampra, to serve Gauranga. So with this, we can build our consciousness, we can prepare our consciousness for tomorrow. To fast from footsteps until twelve and to feast on Hari Naam, to feast on performing more spiritual activities. The pleasure of Guru and Gauranga, so that can be our meditation for today. Alright, so now let's quickly go on to our study of this book Krishna Consciousness, the topmost yoga system. We were in chapter number four. So we were seeing how in any field of activity, there is misery in this material world. Because this world is designed as such dukkhalayam, shashvatam. So whatever endeavors may we perform in this material world, there is bound to be some dukkha. There is bound to be some suffering either individually or collectively, there is bound to be some kind of suffering. So what is the solution? That is what is given by Prabhupada, right? How do we identify why we are suffering? And what is the solution for to get out of this suffering? That is what is brahmadityagnasa. Atato brahmadityagnasa, that means we inquire, why have I got this body? Why have I landed myself here? What is the way to get out of this suffering? What am I supposed to do? If I am not this body, who am I? What is my role? Why do I have a human form of life? What is the utility of this human form of life? Et cetera, all of these questions only the human being can ask, right? So let's continue, where Prabhupada starts with yoga means to inquire, yeah? So devotees can raise their hands, I can see Kapakali Madhaji, yes, go ahead Madhaji. From what is yoga means to inquire from there.
Yes, Madhaji, I cannot say. Thank you, Madhaji. Yoga means to inquire, what am I? If I am not this body, then what am I? I am pure soul. Now if my bodily activities or sensual activities are incorrect, I will not be able to understand myself. What I am and Bhagavat Gita says that we are all grand fools. Why fools? Since we have this body, we are fools. Madhaji, hi, hi little. We are fools. If somebody invites you to come to this apartment, but you know it is full of danger. Do you think you would like to go there? Oh no, we will say, you will say, I am not going there. If it is full of danger, why shall I go? Why shall I go? Similarly, don't you think that the body is full of danger? Then why are you going there? Taking repeated birth? When you are flying in a plane, you are always fearful that there may be a crash. And what is this crashing? It is due to body. The soul is, cannot be affected by crashes, but you are always afraid. The soul is ever existing and the body will not exist. And because you are existing and the soul has accepted the non-existing body, therefore you suffer. Thank you, Madhaji.
Thank you, Madhaji, Dhana Dhanam. Na jaite mriyate va kadachin. Nayam gothva bhavita va na bhuyaha. Ajo nitya shashvato yam purano. Na hanyate hanyamani sharire. Krishna tells in Bhagavat Gita, na jaite na mriyate va kadachin. The soul never comes into existence nor can the soul be ever destroyed. Great na jaite mriyate va kadachin. Nayam gothva bhavita va na bhuyaha. Does not exist in the past, it will not exist in the present nor will it, and it will always exist in the future also. It existed in the past, it is existing in the present and it will also always exist in the future. Because the soul is eternal, right? Ajo nitya shashvato yam purano. Right, it is, nitya is eternal, shashvata, that means it's ever existing, right? Na hanyate hanyamani sharire. And the body is destroyed, the soul is not destroyed. Because I am the soul, isn't it? I am the soul and the soul is never destructed when the body is destroyed like that. Alright, so now who wants to read? Yeah, Shridhar Prabhu, please go ahead. You'll read from the problem. Okay, Hare Krishna Prabhu, yes.
The problem, the problem then is how to get out just as you try to get out of fever. The fever condition is not your permanent life. Permanent life is enjoyment, but due to the fever you cannot enjoy life. When you are sick, you cannot go out, you have to rest and take so many medicines and formulas. But you don't, but we don't want that. Why should I, why should I be a sick person? But you are diseased. Similarly, we should always know that this body is conditional stage of a pure soul is a diseased condition. And anyone who does not know that he is suffering from disease is a fool, is a fool number one. The sasana says, everyone is born a fool because he has this body, therefore he was born a fool. No being, either American or Indian, cat or dog is free from this. You have come to disease, that is, that's all. If you feel I am an American, that's a kind of disease. If you feel that I am Indian, that's also a disease. If you feel that I am a cat, that is a disease. You are not a cat, you are not a dog, you are not Indian, but you are not fair, you are not black, you are not, your soul, that is your identity. And one who does not understand this truth that I am pure soul is defeated in all activities. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, yeah, thank you Prabhu. Hare Krishna, Dhana Dhanam, thank you. So aham brahma smi, right? Brahman janati iti brahmana, right? Brahmana, what does he know? He understands what is Brahman. Brahman means that which is indestructible, right? The soul is also many times called Brahman, right? And the super soul is called parabrahman, right? The soul is that eternal part of the supreme personality of godhead. So not understanding that the soul is eternal, that is such a person is the greatest fool, that's what Prabhupada is saying. And if we identify ourselves as Indian, man, woman, et cetera, we are identifying ourselves with the bodily platform. So anyone who identifies oneself as a bodily platform is bound to be illusion. Because we are eternal beings, but we are identifying ourselves with something that is material. That which is, which is bound to be extinguished, that which is bound to be destroyed. So such a person who thinks himself, you know, this material body is all in all is greatest fool, that's what Prabhupada is saying here. Okay, so let's go ahead, there is some reference about Jesus Christ. Yes, who wants to read? Sindhu Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, pranams.
Pranams.
Sri La Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Now Jesus Christ taught like that. If you lose your soul and gain the whole world, what do you gain? People do not know what they are and yet they work just like madmen. Just see all these people are working and they are madmen. They are not Americans or Indians, Germans or Japanese, they are nothing of the kind. They have been given a chance to come to this naughty place, this earth. And so being born in a particular place, they have a particular kind of body and they are mad after it. Bhagavat Gita says that just as our outer garments are changed, so this body is changed. Yoga means the process of getting out of this material embodiment. Just as you are repeating changes of dress, so you are repeating birth and death. And this is the cause of your miseries. You do not understand this, then all your activities end in defeat.
Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. So the beautiful verse in Bhagavat Gita says. Vasam si jirnani yata vihaya. Navani granath naro parani. Tata sharirani vihaya jirnani. Anyani samyaati navani dehi. So vasam si jirnani yata vihaya. Navani granath naro parani. Just like we give away our old clothes and we wear new clothes like that. The soul gives away old worn out bodies and picks up new bodies according to the desires, according to the qualities that it has acquired. Tata sharirani vihaya jirnani, like that. Just like the body gives away old clothes and accepts new clothes, similarly the soul accepts new bodies. What is it? Vasam si jirnani yata vihaya, navani granath naro parani. Tata sharirani vihaya jirnani. Anyani samyaati navani dehi. Navani dehi means new body. The soul will accept a new fresh, you know, young baby's body and then again you start your journey from where you had left in your previous birth. According to your desire, according to your karmas, you have landed yourself in the womb of a particular mother. According to the qualities you've acquired, in a particular family that you have been destined to be with, according to your previous guna and karma. According to your previous guna and karma, you acquire a certain male or a female body, you acquire a particular family. Then you start your journey again with a new body, right? One does not understand this, then one's activities end in defeat. That's what Prabhupada is saying here. Alright, let's move forward. Priyanka Madhaji, please read, yoga means to get out of this embodiment.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji. Yoga means to get out of this embodiment and it means to know oneself. Your body is born after parents, similarly as your soul, you are also the source of the birth, of its birth. We do not mean birth beginning historically from a certain day and ending on a certain day. No, the soul is not like that, it has no beginning and it has no end. But in Bhagavat Gita, it is said that the soul is part and parcel of God. God is eternal and God is full of joy and bliss. Supposedly as an absolute person, the godhead is thus is full of bliss, eternal and full of knowledge. And because we are also part and parcel of this to whom, we have passed with blissfulness and eternality. And we are full of knowledge according to our infinitesimal size.
Okay, thank you, Madhaji, Hare Krishna. So this beautiful verse which says. Nityo nityanam chetanas chetanana. Ekobahunam vidadati kamaan, right? Nityo nityanam, right? Both the lord as well as the jivas are eternal. Chetanas chetanana, both are having consciousness, right? Ekobahunam yo vidadati kamaan. But there is one who is the maintainer and the rest are all maintained, there is one supreme soul, right? And that supreme soul is the supreme personality of godhead. There is all the jivaatmas are infinitesimal particles of the supreme lord. They also have these qualities of the lord which is satchit and ananda. But they are often infinitesimal size, right? Infinitesimal size means, like Prabhupada gives an example and also Krishna gives an example. Just like a drop of water in the ocean and the ocean itself, just like a spark of fire and fire itself, right? Similarly, we also have the same characteristics as the lord, but we have it in very limited proportion, right? We also spoke about that verse given by Parasara Munni on the glories of Ayuswarya of the supreme personality of God. How the lord is complete in all of his opulences, whether it is. Like the verse Ayuswarya says, samagritse vidya se, ashishashriya. Yana vairagya se, sannam bhagahithingana. Right, the lord is complete in knowledge, wealth, strength, beauty, fame and renunciation. Whereas we find in this world, many people having higher degrees of one particular opulence. Somebody is very famous, somebody is very beautiful, somebody is very knowledgeable, like that we find. So many people, they get famous when they have lot of wealth, et cetera, right? But no one in this world can claim to have all the riches, all the knowledge, all the wealth, that's not possible. And even if one may claim that, you know, I am the most beautiful, you know, woman in the world, like they declare Miss Universe. You know, Miss World and all that, right? Even if somebody is declared as the most beautiful person in a particular year, that person cannot claim to possess it forever. And secondly, that person cannot claim to possess the other opulences, right? Somebody who is very knowledgeable may not be beautiful, somebody who is very beautiful may not be knowledgeable. Somebody who may be very rich may not be a renunciant, he may want to hold on to his riches, he may want to not give away anything, he may be a miser. Similarly, somebody who may be, who may be very, very rich, may be very, very famous also, but may not be beautiful, isn't it? So like that, so some of us may possess some degrees of all these opulences. All of us possess some degree of each of these opulences, some are more, some are less, et cetera. But it is only the lord who can claim that he has all the six opulences in full. That is why sarvam akarshinati iti Krishna. He is called Krishna because by his beauty, by his opulences, he is able to attract everybody to him, right? If you are not attracted, that is our problem. Otherwise you are attracted, right? Somebody is very famous, you know, Amitabh Bachchan is going to come, you know, next door for a film shoot. You can imagine how many people will crowd around just to get a glimpse of him, right? And he is just famous and maybe little rich, right? Or maybe Ayushwara is coming, then you know so many fan following, so many people you know come to see her. Because she is very beautiful, because she is famous, she, maybe she is rich, right? But how long will that exist? Prabhupada mentions in my lecture, there was one actress, you know, he talks about the shelf life, right? How long can somebody be famous or beautiful or rich for that matter, right? Like even, you know, the richest of people, right? Sometimes, you know, they have to fall into so many levels of poverty because of some kind of, uh, uh, you know, um, uh, drought or some external, um, you know, devi, devi shakti, right? Somebody, um, you know, due to some, uh, external conditions created by the devi shakti of the Lord or simply because of their previous karma, right? You just go and then you lose everything, right? You go, you invest in something and, you know, so for example, you invest in the real estate, you know, some crores of rupees and then the market falls down, the real estate market comes down. Or, you know, the government just imposes that area is, you know, non-residential or whatever it may be, forest area, for example, right? The value comes down drastically and, you know, a person might be a millionaire on a particular day. Maybe they become a pauper on the next day. Hmm? So, even if we claim to possess a lot of riches or beauty or wealth or strength or beauty, right? It is not going to last forever, right? It will last until the Lord wants to keep that opulence with us, right? If we engage in devotional service, then we, then we are utilizing, we are properly utilizing the source or the skill or the talent or the wealth given to us. Otherwise, if you are misutilizing it, uh, or we are not utilizing it, then you will get rusted. Right? And that's not the proper utility, right? So, that's what is given in this paragraph, right? Um, wherein Krishna is talking about, hmm, uh, I am the source of everything. So, whatever wonderful things you see in this world are sparks of my splendor, right? Uh, and also he's talking about the living entity is being part and parcel. Mameva amshu jiva loke, jiva bhuta sanatna, right? We are parts and parcels of the Lord. We have the same qualities of the Lord. Uh, that's why we are also seeking happiness. All that is perfect. But where do we seek happiness? How do we seek happiness? Uh, do we seek happiness independent of the Lord or in conjunction with the Lord, uh, etcetera determines our destination? All right? Okay, so let's go on. Uh, the next paragraph is very interesting, talking about, hmm, how, uh, you know, uh, how, how we should use our intelligence for, uh, certain, uh, proper purposes. If we use our intelligence, how to eat, sleep may to defend much better than what we were doing earlier. But that's not the purpose of human form of life. Because animals also do it, although they may not do it in a very sophisticated way, but they also do that. Uh, so simply by doing that, uh, one cannot, uh, make a proper utilization of the human form of life. So, if one does not utilize the human form of life properly, one will be glided down to take the bodies, uh, according to one's desires, right? If somebody wants to eat hog a lot, one may become a hog in the next life. If somebody wants to sleep a lot, one may become a polar bear, right? Um, like that, you know, depending on whatever is our desires, Krishna will give, Krishna will say, tatas tu. Uh, then unfortunately, we have to be born in the lower species too, uh, to fulfill our, um, you know, desires, unnecessary desires like that. So, we have to be very careful, what is it that I want to desire? Because it may get fulfilled and that necessary and need not necessarily be the best thing for us, right? Gliding down lower species is not the best thing that can happen. Uh, it is probably is the worst thing that can happen to us. All right, anyone else wants to read the next paragraph? Okay, uh, yeah, Karpa Gavli Mathaji already read. Priyanka Mathaji also already read. Anybody else who's not read thus far wants to read? Karpa Gavli Mathaji, did you read?
Yes, Mathaji, I read, Mathaji.
Okay, so Anjanam Mathaji, go ahead. The human beings are understood?
The human beings are understood to be the most intelligent of all living creatures, but they are misusing their intelligence. How they are misusing their intelligence by devoting it to the animal prop- uh, propensities? These animals' propensities are eating, sleeping, waiting and fearing. You, you can analyze the trend of modern civilization. Everyone is preceded with these four principles of animal life. They are sleeping and creating, uh, creating some cushions for comfortable sleep. They are creating, uh, palatable dishes for the, uh, eating, uh, eating propensity. Uh, they are, uh, exciting sex very nicely for the mating necessities. Uh, they, and they are defending their country with so many atom bombs. That is the fear, uh, fear propensity. But, uh, but these symptoms, uh, you will find among the animals. They are also sleeping according to their own ways and they are defending. They may not have the atom bomb, but, uh, uh, but they have some way of defending. You can kill your animal or he can kill you, but there is actually no defense. You cannot defend yourself. Wherever you drop the bomb, i- it will hurt you. Uh, due, uh, to nuclear, uh, radi- radiation. So, this is not the solution of your problem. The solution of your pro- problem is to get out of this, of, of the conditions, uh, state of life. That is called yoga, to link yourself to the Supreme. There, there is.
Okay, thank you. Hare Krishna. We have this verse, right? Ahar netravayamaitunachya. Samanim ekam pashubhir narana. Darmo hi ekko adikko vishesho, darme nahina pashubhir samana. So, we have a choice whether we want to act in the animalistic platform or whether we want to, uh, act in the platform of a human being. And what is a platform of human being? Uh, the platform of the human being is to try to get out of this conditioned state of life. And the some of us are bound by golden threads, some of them, some of us by copper threads, some of us by silver thread, according to our desires, right? Some of us have Brahmanical qualities, some of this, some of us have Shatraya qualities, some of us have Vaishya qualities, some of us have Shudra qualities, right? We are all bound to this material world, the three modes of material nature, right? And it is not one particular quality that is there. It is always a combination of all the three modes. Hmm, sometimes a particular mode becomes more prominent, sometimes some other mode becomes more prominent, right? That's why we chant during Hare Krishna during Brahma Murti time. Because that time Satvik mode is most prevalent, right? At that time, it is able to, and the mind is able to concentrate more on the Hare Krishna Maham mantra, right? We are, our mind is not troubled with so many other things because it's the first thing of the day. After cleansing our body, we are sitting to chant the Hare Krishna Maham mantra, right? So, Satvik platform is the best, but however, that is not the ultimate destination, right? What is the solution? The solution is to, uh, is to, is to transcend the three modes of material nature. Devi hi eshukonamahi mama maya durat kiriya maamibhiye prapakgyante. Maya metam tarantite. We want to, we want to transcend ourselves from the three modes of material nature. How can we do that? That we can do by linking to the Supreme. That's what Prabhupada mentioned here. And how do you link yourself to the Supreme? Is by surrendering to the, the Supreme personality of Godhead, right? Maamcha yogi bichareena bhakti yogena sevate, right? Uh, uninterrupted service under the Supreme personality of Godhead. Bhakti yogena sevate, right? By performing bhakti. What does it do? Sagunaan samadhiyatai kaan brahma bhuyaya kalpate, right? Sagunaan samadhiyatai kaan. It can enable one to transcend the three modes of material nature and brahma bhuyaya kalpate. Establish oneself in Brahman. What is that Brahman platform? Na sho chati na kaang chati. Samasarveshu bhuteshu matbakti la bakti param. That is a platform where one realizes that there is no need to hanker for anything in this world. There is no need to, uh, you know, sho chati na kaang chati. There is no need to lament for anything, nor there is a need to hanker for anything. Because we didn't possess anything, nor are we going to possess anything eternally. So, in this stage of life, whatever comes in my possession, whatever state I may be into, in that situation, how can I best serve Guru and Goranga? That state, uh, that state is brahma bhuta prasanatma, na sho chati na kaang chati. All right, so now let's conclude this chapter. I think it's the last couple of paragraphs. Uh, there is a Supreme. Let's see how much is there. Okay, okay, we'll finish it today. Yeah, there is a Supreme. Who wants to read? Yahima Mathaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji.
Hare Krishna.
There is a Supreme. This material creation is so nice, don't you think? There is a friend behind it. The king, the sky is so beautiful, the food stuff is being produced. The moon is rising in due course, the sun is rising in due course. Supplying heat for, for your health, supplying heat to the planetary systems. Everything is arranged very nicely and yet the fools say there is no brain behind it. But it is all, all happening automatically. The fact is that there is God Krishna and we are all parts and parcels of life have, have been conditioned in some way or other in this material atmosphere. But now we have this human pro- form of life and so we have to get out of. We have to get out of.
We have to get out of the entanglement, yeah.
We have to get. I don't know, where is it, Mathaji?
We have, here, here, I've highlighted it here in green. We have to get out of the entanglement.
And entanglement, but getting out is not possible. You cannot get out of entanglement of the material body unless you develop Krishna consciousness. Krishna consciousness is not artificial. Don't think that this is the greatest necessity of the human being. Krishna is Krishna, uh, Kirtana performance that.
Krishna consciousness, God consciousness is there within you.
Within you, sorry.
Don't you find?
When there is a Kirtana performance, that the more innocent a person is, the sooner he begins immediately, the child begins to clap, begins to dance. This is within him and it is very simple, this Krishna consciousness.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathaji.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, sorry.
Hare Krishna, no problem. Okay, so immediately the child begins to clap, begins to dance, right? Prabhupada mentions in this very, very classic lecture. Uh, he pray, he says that even a child can take part in the chanting, even a dog can take part in the chanting of the Hare Krishna Maham mantra. This process is so sublime that anybody without any qualification can take up this process of singing, chanting and dancing, right? That's what Prabhupada mentions in that beautiful lecture. So, there is no qualification except a little bit of Shraddha. Uh, tomorrow is Balaram Purimah we are discussing, right? Balaram Purimah, uh, Balaram is non-different from Nityanandh Prabhu. What do Nityanandh Prabhu do? Right? Shraddhavan jaan hai, shraddhavan jaan hai. Prabureyakya yabhai magi ekdiksha. Bolo Krishna, bhajo Krishna, korokrishna siksha. So, there's really one price you have to pay. What is that one price? Shraddhavan, right? We need to have faith in the holy name. Right? He's opened up a marketplace that the holy name is distributed freely, right? But only one price you have to pay. At least we have to have some faith in the holy name. That's why Nityanandh Prabhu is calling out, shraddhavan jaan hai. Oh, people who have some faith, come here. I'm giving you this holy name free of cost, right? Hmm, prabureyakya yabhai, right? I, I'm doing this on the order of my staff, of my, uh, spiritual master who's at Chetan Mahaprabhu, right? Prabureyakya yabhai, I beg of you, magi ekdiksha. What is that diksha? Bolo Krishna, bhajo Krishna, korokrishna siksha. Right? Always chant the names of Lord Hari, uh, bhajo Krishna, worship Krishna and korokrishna siksha. Educate others about Krishna. This is the mode of Balaram, this is the mode of Nityanandh Prabhu and this is the mode of Sheila Prabhu Pad, right? What is Prabhupada saying? Even a child can learn to clap, dance and start this process of Krishna consciousness. It is so simple, uh, but he also says this is the greatest necessity of the human being. God consciousness is al- is already there inside us, but as human beings, it is utmost necessary for us to revive this God consciousness, to revive our Krishna consciousness. And how do we do that? We need to simply have some faith, chant Hare Krishna, sing Hare Krishna and dance to the tunes of Hare Krishna. Very awesome process, right? So, sukam karthum abhiyam. Uh, who else? Nishamathji, yes, go ahead. So, unless we develop Krishna consciousness, there is no rescue from the entanglement of conditioned life. Yes. Nishamathji, you need to unmute yourself, Mathaji.
Okay, thank you. Tandhat pranam sabhi ko.
Tandhat, very good.
Hari bodh. So, unless you develop Krishna consciousness, there is no rescue from the entanglement of conditioned life. This is, you have to understand, this is not some sentiment, no, it is a great science. You have to understand it nicely. Then the human form of life will be successful and otherwise it is defeated. You may become a very great nation, but that is not the solution of the problem of life. By the grace of Krishna, I am able to serve you with my life's energy. I left the United States in nineteen sixty-seven in poor health, but life and death, everything depends on Krishna. I thought, let me go back to Vrindavan because Vrindavan is a sanctified place where Krishna consciousness is very strong. I thought that I might go there and die in Krishna consciousness. Of course, if you are always in the atmosphere of Krishna consciousness, then here also you can have Vrindavana. Vrindavan is not a particular place that is called Vrindavana. Krishna says, it is not that I live in the kingdom of God, vaykunta. Nor is it that I live in the heart of the yogi. The yogi wants to find out where Krishna is within the heart. But Krishna says, I am not in the abode in the spiritual sky, not, nor I am in the heart of the yogi. Then, where are you? Krishna says, I stay where my pure duties are chanting my glories, that is Vrindavan. So.
Hi, thank you, Mathji.
Tandhat pranam.
Hari bodh, Tandhat. So, na ham dishati vaykunte, right? Krishna himself tells, I am not in vaykunta dharm, I am not in the heart of the yogis. Where am I always eternally situated? I am situated in that place where devotees always sing my glories, right? So, Prabhupada was initially thinking, oh, maybe should I go back to Vrindavan when he was ve- very, very unwell? And then Prabhupada was there in the Western world because later on Prabhupada, uh, quoting this verse, Prabhupada said, Krishna, it is Vrindavan dharm in any part of the world where Krishna's glories are always chanted, where Krishna's glories are always heard, where people congregate towards, together to join and chant Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, hare hare, hare ram, hare ram, 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 hare hare. So, that is Vrindavan dharm. So, this Vrindavan consciousness can be, uh, can be there in our hearts, whether we are in Mumbai, whether we are in Chennai or whether we are in Dubai or whether we are in US or whether we are in Pune, whichever part of the world we are in, whether in Nagpur or wherever we are, right? Wherever, whichever part of the world we are, whether in Bangalore or Chennai, wherever, right? The Vrindavan consciousness can be kept in our heart, uh, in our heart. It can, it can be an eternal abode of, um, Vrindavan dharm, Veshu, Radha and Krishna can eternally conduct their pastimes. For that, what we have to do? You have to, maybe you have to create a nice asana in our heart for their lordships. Uh, it has to be very clean, right? Radha and Krishna will not come in a dirty place and perform their leela. Right? They need a clean place which is full, which is devoid of all anartas. And how is it done? Chaito darpana marjanam. Simply by chanting Hare Krishna Maham mantra, when we cleanse our hearts of all the lust, anger, greed, pride, any illusion, just like Chetan Mahaprabhu cleansed up the Gundicha Mandir. Not once, not twice, not three times, but many, many times, he cleaned it fully first. The big, 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 big sand particles came out and then again he cleansed the entire place, small, small particles came out. And then again he cleansed and then he just threw water across and cleaned the place entire nicely. Hmm, similarly, when we clean the, the mirror of our heart, initially lot of big, 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 big anartas come out. You're feeling miserable, oh God, I'm so bad, isn't it? Some of us feel that when we chant Hare Krishna. But the, the trick is in continuing to chant Hare Krishna and then the, the subtle anartas come out. The desire for name, fame, glory, etcetera, that also, we continue with the chanting of the Hare Krishna Maham mantra and then we will be able to taste the Krishna prema, which is the actual goal of, uh, chanting Hare Krishna, right? So, Krishna is saying, I am not, uh, I am not in, um, any place, right? Vrindavan is not a place. Vrindavan is a state of mind. Wherever Krishna is remembered, that place is Vrindavan. So, Prabhupada says, wherever I am, wherever Prabhupada was there, that itself was Vrindavan. So, Prabhupada need not have to go back to Vrindavan. Wherever he was preaching Krishna's glories, it was non-different from Vrindavan dharm. Okay, we'll end with Niveda, Niveda Mathji, Niveda Mathji. Uh, if possible, you can switch on your camera, Mathji. I think you've joined us for the first time. Thank you. Yeah, please go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji.
Hare Krishna.
This is my first class. I'm listening. Um, I have got this link through my friend.
Okay.
So, I just thank Lord Krishna for, uh, making me here to be in our group and to chant Krishna mantras.
Hare Krishna, welcome, Mathji. If you can give us your devotion, it'll be nice, it'll be nice to see who is Niveda Mathji. If possible, maybe at the end of the session, all right? Hare Krishna, welcome to our group, Mathji. We study Monday to Friday at, uh, twelve forty-five PM, um, Shla Prabhupada's books and see how much we can discuss and apply it in our lives, right? So, that's what is the goal of our study session. Uh, you can read from here, Mathji. So, if that is Vrindavan, then I am there.
So, if that is Vrindavan, then I am there. There is no difference. Wherever there is an electric light, there is electricity. It is naturally understood. Similarly, wherever there is Krishna consciousness, it is Vrindavana. We can create Vrindavana by the mercy of Krishna. If we chant Hare Krishna, perfect this Krishna consciousness. Try to understand the philosophy behind it. It is a science, not a bluff. We can speak from any angle of vision. Krishna consciousness is a great necessity of human society. Learn it and appreciate it, comprehend it and assimilate it and teach it. It is very simple. If you, of, if you offense.
Offensively?
If you offenselessly chant Hare Krishna, everything will be revealed from within because Krishna is sitting within you. If you are strong and have faith and conviction in Krishna as, as well as in a spiritual ma- spiritual master, the transparent vaya medium to Krishna, then Krishna is there. The Veda says that if you have implicit faith in God and implicit faith in your bona- bona fide guru who teaches you Krishna consciousness, then the result will be that all the vedic virtues will be revealed. The process, the process is spiritual. It does not require any material qualifications. Thus, thus, specula- speculators who are, who are not realized, the soul are covered in delusion and are simply wasting their time.